There's no peeing up here.
No, I found one.
I just talked to her yesterday. She didn't say nothing.
Let's call this October. Let's call this October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two Dixon County Planning Commission meeting in order, please. Mr. Qualls, would you give devotion, please?
Let's pray. Gracious righteous God and only Father, we're so thankful we have this day of such beauty. We're thankful for the rain, Father. We're thankful that people here are safe from all the storms that happened yesterday. Help us to deliberate this evening, Father, in a way that will really improve the business of this county, Father. We lift it up and all the people that serve it to your protection and your guidance, Father. And it's in the name of the Lord that we pray these things. Amen.
Amen. And at this time, I'd like to also ask everybody to keep Commissioner Ferris in their prayers with the loss of her child. Mr. Darnell, what you call roll?
Todd Barry.
Here.
Tina Ferris. Darren Green. Mac Pilkington. Robert Qualls.
Here.
David Brogdon. Jeff Chase. Shane Chandler.
Here.
Gary Peeler. Christie Sullivan.
Here.
Beth Garrett. Robert Comer.
Here.
Chairman, we do have a form.
Okay, thank you, sir. Like to recognize all the visitors in the crowd. If you have not done so, would you please sign in as you exit here in the front table? With that being stated, we'll now move into the approval of the minutes as everybody looked over the minutes of the current meeting. Is that a motion, Mr. Qualls?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I would approve the minutes of the September meeting of Dixon Planning Planning Commission be approved as submitted.
Have a motion to approve the minutes as they stand by Robert Pauls, a second by Robert Comer. Any additions? If not, all in favor state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We'll now move into items. We got item one is the final plant of the Harmon property. Promised Land Road subdivision, tax map zero five seven, part of parcel two point. Zero four, six nine, six acres, Promised Land Road, Charlotte, Tennessee, A-one agriculture. Be the fourth district. I believe Ms. Harrington is at, well, Ms. Harrington is absent tonight, so that'll be all presented. Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yeah. Yes, this is the fourth district. You are representing this Promised Land Road.
Yes, yeah, this was surveyed by Christie Surveying, creating five new lots. Uh, this area is serviced by the Water Authority of Dixon County. Uh, there are no issues supplying water to the subdivision, and we do have confirmation that charity for the new fire hydrant has been paid. As what was sent out, Ms. Harrington is not here, but she had no additional staff comments on this first issue.
Mr. Pilkington, you have any comments? Would you turn your mic on, sir?
No.
No.
For the next several months, we'll still have some that are in the works, so to be.
Is that a motion to approve? All right, I have a proper motion by Mac Pilkington to approve the final plat for Harmon property Promised Land Road subdivision. Do I have a second? Have a second by Robert Qualls. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. We'll go into item number two is final plant for Smith Estate subdivision, tax map zero seven six parcels, twenty-eight point zero four, twenty-eight zero five, eleven point three two acres, Old County House Road, Charlotte, Tennessee, A-one agriculture be first district.
Okay, this was also surveyed by Christie Surveying to create eight new lots. This area is also serviced by the Water Authority. Uh, there's no issue supplying water, and we do have confirmation that charity for this fire hydrant has also been paid. Um, Ms. Harrington also had no additional comments on this second item.
Yes, sir, Mr. Berry.
Go ahead, Mr. Pilkington.
Yes, you had, um, I believe so.
Yes.
Is that David and Stevie or just David?
Yes.
David and Steve Smith. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Pilkington. Mr. Berry?
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't have a problem with it. Um, everything looks to be in order. I make a motion we pass.
Have a motion by Todd Barry to approve. Do I have a second to pass?
Second.
Second by RJ Comer, that the Smith brothers will sell this. All in favor state aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, it passes. Item number three, final plat for Martin Branch subdivision, tax map zero eight five, parcel sixteen point nine, sixteen point one four. I'm sorry, sixteen point one nine, sixteen point one four acres, Sycamore Road, A-one agriculture, ninth district.
Okay, this was also surveyed by Christie Surveying, creating nine new lots. Uh, this area is also is served by Sylvia Tennessee City Pond Utility District. Uh, there's no issue supplying water, but no fire hydrant is required because there is only a four-inch main water line that runs down. Uh, Sycamore Road. Uh, Ms. Harrington had one staff comment on this. That was to correct the typo on the parcel number. Uh, sixteen point one nine is correct. You'll see on part of it, it does say sixteen point one eight. Of course, for once this is split up and remapped, each one will have its own separate parcel number, too.
I make the motion to approve with staff comments. By Shane Chandler, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Have a second by Todd Barry. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor state aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. We'll now move into item number four, final plat for Lucas Road subdivision, tax map one thirty-nine, part of parcels twelve point zero zero, twelve point zero one, eight point three nine acres. Lucas Road Dixon, Tennessee, A-one agriculture, second district. This is Ms. Ferris's district, and she is absent.
This was also surveyed by Christie Surveying and they created six new lots. Uh, this area is serviced by the Water Authority. Uh, no issue supplying, uh, water. Uh, there is only a four-inch, uh, main water line, so no fire hydrants are required. Uh, Ms. Harrington had no additional staff comments.
I would recommend to approve. Due to no staff comments and no representation from this district, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by RJ Comer. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor state aye?
Aye.
Disapprove? None? Okay. All right, we'll move into item number five. Changes to subdivision regulations. Uh, part one will be amended section one point one oh one, policy and purpose addition of letter O.
This is a public hearing.
Okay.
For these. Uh, the first one is the addition to policy and purposes, the addition of letter O, which reads the planning commission shall have the authority discretion to consider whether a proposed subdivision or any other action or decision of the planning commission contemplated in these regulations is consistent with the policies and purposes set forth herein. May cite any of these policies and purposes as a basis to approve, conditionally approve, or deny a proposed subdivision or any other action or decision of the planning commission, uh, contemplated in these regulations. Taking six such action, planning commission shall, shall clearly state in the record of proceeding, all facts supporting the planning commission's action.
Is there anybody here to speak for or against? These amendments? Is there anyone here to speak for or against these amendments? Is there anyone here to speak for or against these amendments? Okay, we'll close these proceedings.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
In, in light of, uh, the non outcome of the public hearing. I would move we approve the, uh, section O as read previously by Mr. Darnell. And, uh, included in the Dixon County subdivision regulations.
Okay, I have a motion by Robert Qualls to close the proceedings due to nobody to speak here for or against amended section one point one oh four, policy and procedures of additional of letter O. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by RJ Comer. Any additional discussion? If not, we'll go into roll call vote.
Todd Berry?
Yes.
Mac Pilkington? Robert Qualls?
Yes.
Jeff Chase?
Yeah.
Shane Chandler?
Yes.
Christie Sullivan?
Yes.
Robert Comer?
Yes.
Okay, we're still in public hearing. We'll go into section, uh, item number two, amend and revise section four point or four dash one oh two point three, width to depth ratio.
Okay, this currently reads no lot when subdivided, she'll have a greater width to depth ratio than one to four. Therefore, when any lot is subdivided from any existing tract or lot, no side lot line should be greater than four times the length of the front lot line. Lots that form along the radius of a cul-de-sac are exempt from these requirements. They shall be revised and amended to read as follows. No lot when subdivided shall have a greater width depth ratio than one to three. Therefore, when any lot is subdivided from uh, an existing lot or tract, no side lot line shall be greater than three times the length of the front lot line. Lots that form along the radius of a cul-de-sac are exempt from this requirement. There's also the addition of letter B. No lot when subdivided shall have less than four sides. Three-sided or triangle lots are prohibited. No single side of any lot shall be less than fifty feet except for lot lines frontage on a cul-de-sac.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for or against this amendment two? Is there anyone here to speak for or against amendment two? Is there anyone here to speak for or against amendment two? We will close this public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, once again, in the rela- in light of the non-commun, I would move that amendment two, as previously read by Mr. Darnell, be included in the Dixon County subdivision regulations.
Okay, I have a proper motion by Robert Qualls to amend amendment two. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second by Todd Barry. Any further discussion? If not, we'll do a roll call vote.
Todd Berry?
Yes.
Mac Pilkington?
Yes.
Robert Qualls?
Yes.
Jeff Chase?
Yeah.
Shane Chandler?
Yes.
Christie Sullivan? Robert Comer?
Yes.
Chairman?
Thank you. We'll now move into amendment number three, amend and revise section four dash one oh three point one 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 subdivision, public road access requirements.
Uh, this section currently reads, there's several different sections to it. All major subdivisions containing five lots or more, including all phases, must have access to a public road that has a minimum of a hot mix asphalt surface, meeting county, state, or municipal regulations. Letter B, all major subdivisions shall not be constructed or approved, which have access solely to a road that is deficient in more than one of the following criteria. For a county road cul-de-sac or other roadway without a second access or intersection to a county road or state highway, and the point of connection is more than fifteen hundred feet from a single intersection with another county road. Number two, the road is generally improved to allow two-lane traffic for a minimum average width of eighteen feet until it is connected to a major thoroughfare. Number three, the road is less than two lanes at any point which in improved width is less than fifteen feet. Number four, with all deficiencies as determined by the planning commission that may pose a risk public safety, such as a road of poor sight distance at its intersection with another county road, substandard intersection with another county road, steep grades and or steep slopes, precipitous shoulders with congested traffic, access only via low water bridge, and such matters of a significant nature peculiar to a county road that makes access to a subdivision unusually hazardous. Number five, subdivisions with more than one outlet to other county roads not deficient in the criteria noted above may be credited as a reduction of waiver of one of the deficiencies noted above. But such waiver granted in the absolute discretion of the planning commission. And it show, this section shall be revised and amended as follows. All major subdivisions containing five lots or more, including all phases, must have access to a public road that has a minimum of a hot mix asphalt surface, meeting county, state, or municipal regulations. Letter B, no major subdivisions shall be constructed or approved, which have access to a road that is deficient in any of the following criteria. Number one, for a county road cul-de-sac or other roadway without a second access or intersection to a county road or state highway, and the point of connection is more than fifteen hundred feet from a single intersection with another county road. Number two, the road is generally, not generally improved to allow two-lane traffic with a minimum average width of eighteen feet until it is connected to a major thoroughfare. Number three, the road is less than two lanes at any point in which the improved width is less than fifteen feet. Number four, with other deficiencies as determined by the planning commission that may pose a risk of public safety, such as a road of poor sight distance at its intersection with another county road, substandard intersection with another county road, steep grades and or steep slopes, precipitous shoulders with congested traffic, access only via low water bridge, and such matters of a significant nature peculiar to a county road that makes access to the subdivision unusually hazardous. Number five, in the F, absolute discretion of the planning commission, subdivisions with more than one outlet to other county roads not deficient in the criteria noted above, may be credited as a reduction or waiver of one of the deficiencies noted above. Uh, the revisions to this section shall not apply to applications that are currently completed and filed with the appropriate county agency prior to the effective date of this revised section.
Thank you, Mr. Darnell. Sorry, that was so long. No, not yet. Um, is there anybody here to speak for or against amendment three? Is there anyone here to speak for or against amendment three? Is there anyone here to speak for or against amendment three? Yeah, yes, sir, Mr. Harmon.
Clarification, because it wasn't so long. If, if you made all five subdivision criteria, the planning commission could still turn you down for subdivision. Is that just, is that one of those that is stated in there?
Mr. Darnell?
I know before, four out of five. And I think in some of the previous meetings, it said you met all five, planning commission still turns you down based on their discretion. I'm just wondering if this is the the vote on that.
Part of it reads that there's descriptions, uh, discrepancies as determined by the planning commission that they think may pose a risk. Which includes what we read, but no, that part reads exactly as it was in the book before.
If you made all five.
You, you, yeah, this part is you, you have to meet off, all five, and they, if you have another road that's another outlet to a county road that is not deficient, they have the right to credit you that if they want to.
And I understand your concern since how you have dealt with this.
Yeah.
Well, and I, and there may be another. You know, approval coming up that I, I thought it stated somewhere, because there's that there's discretion, I'm surprised it didn't. If you met all criteria.
No. No, if you meet all the criteria.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Harmon. Is there anybody else here to speak for or against amendment three? If not, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that, uh, we close the public hearing in light of the only one comment, no others, and approve amendment three, amendments to section four dash one oh three, one oh, one, one, one eleven, as read by Mr. Darnell.
I have a motion to close public hearing and adopt amendment three by RJ Comer. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I second that motion.
I have a second by Robert Qualls. Any further discussion in this matter? If not, we'll go to a roll call vote. And we'll do that inverted, if you don't mind, sir.
Okay, Robert Comer?
Yes.
Christie Sullivan?
Yeah.
Shane Chandler?
Yes.
Jeff Chase?
Yeah.
Robert Qualls?
Yes.
Mac Pilkington?
Yes.
Todd Berry?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, still in the public hearing, we have, uh, item number four, amend and revise section four dash one one one, preservation of natural features and amenities. Uh, item A, add section four, one 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 dash, uh, point one, preliminary plant requirements.
Whereas Dixon County subdivision regulations, section four dash one 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 and five point one oh two point two five expressly empower the Dixon County Planning Commission to require that preliminary plat maps to include the location of natural features, amenities, and other pertinent features. Whereas the planning commission first exercises its discretion relative sections four dash one one one, five dash one oh two point two five, when a preliminary plat is presented to the planning commission for approval. Whereas any determination of or requirements relative to section four dash one 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 and five dash one oh two point two five made by the planning commission when a preliminary plat is presented for approval would result in unexpected delays in approving subdivision plats and un- unanticipated hardships imposed upon subdivision applicants. Whereas the planning commission finds that requiring that all preliminary plants, plats show the location of natural features and amenities relevant to section four dash one 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 and five point one oh two point two five, as amended herein, will provide for a more efficient and predictable process for applicants to provide the planning commission timely and pertinent information regarding the protection of natural features and amenities. Whereas pursuant, pursuant to Dixon County subdivision regulations, section one dash one oh four J, it is a policy and purpose of the planning commission and the subdivision regulations to preserve the integrity, stability, beauty, and value of the judicial area, jurisdictional area. Whereas pursuant to Dixon County subdivision regulations, section one dash one oh four K, it is the policy and purpose of the planning commission and the subdivision regulations to preserve the natural beauty, topography of the jurid- jurisdictional area, and to ensure appropriate development regard to these natural features. Whereas the planning commission finds that amending and revising sections four dash one 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 and five point one oh two point two five is necessary to fulfill the policies and purposes set forth in sections one dash one oh four J and K to preserve and protect existing natural features that add value to planning region and to the, preserve the rural character of Dixon County while allowing for reasonable growth and development. Now therefore, the Dixon County Planning Commission hereby amends and revises Dixon County subdivision regulations, section four dash one one one, five point one oh two point two five. Subdivision regulations, section four point one 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 currently reads as follows, preservation of natural features and amenities. Existing features which would add value to residential development are to the planning region as a whole, such as trees, watercourses, and falls, historic spots, and similar irreplaceable assets be preserved in the design of the subdivision as required by the planning commission. No trees shall be removed from any subdivision or any change of grade of land affected until approval of a preliminary subdivision plant, plat has been granted. All trees on the plat required to be retained shall be preserved, and all trees where required shall be welded and protected against change of grade. When required, the preliminary plat shall show the number and location of existing trees, shall indicate all those marked for retention. Section four dash one 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 shall be revised and amended as follows. Preservation of natural features and amenities. Four dash one 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 point one, preliminary plat requirements. A preliminary plat shall label and show the location of all natural features and irreplaceable assets defined below, existing within the boundaries of a proposed subdivision and adjoining the border of a proposed subdivision. Upon submission of a preliminary plat, application to the planning and zoning department, no natural features or irreplaceable assets shall be removed from any subdivision, nor shall any change of grade of land be affected until approval of a preliminary subdivision plat has been granted. A preliminary plat shall provide notation indicating the subdivider's intent regarding the retention or elimination of any natural features or irreplaceable assets shown on the plat. This is number four.
Thank you, Mr. Darnell. Uh, Mr. Pilkington?
Yeah, uh, I, I got one problem with this, nothing else. It's about trees. Uh, if you build a house and there's a big oak tree close to your house, insurance companies don't insure it. So we got to make sure that they, I mean, where they gonna put the house and where the trees are, so there's no conflict with the insurance company. Because I know with a lot, a lot of augers, they say, you, you build a house beside a tree right there, like big old tree right there, they're not gonna insure it. So we got to be careful where the house goes and then make sure that tree's not going to affect the house.
I, I think the time to address that, Mr. Chairman, is at the time of submission of somebody trying to. We, we can't come up with the general principle, sitting here tonight saying, well, we think one day somebody's gonna try to put a house too close to a tree, so we can't do anything.
Right, right. We can't, we can't police this. I think the, uh, intent is to label um, specific items. But, uh, we are at a public hearing for item number four. Amendment and revision of section four dash eleven one one one. Is there anybody here to speak for or against this amendment? Is there anyone here to speak for or against this amendment?
You said you intend it to label, but it blindly says most state approvals, planning position, before you remove any tree.
Yes, Mr. Harmon, that is, um.
No, there are ten, well, the next part lists ten inch and bigger.
Ten inches longer.
There's different sections, but yes.
So a ten inch, say the tree can't be removed till this panel five, so you can remove it.
Well, it says natural features. If you can prove that cedar is natural to this region, sir.
There's, there's an assumption that eastern red ce- cedars are indigenous species. There's a lot of species out there that are not indigenous species that aren't going to be required to be retained under any circumstances. Privet. Uh, mock orange, I, we, we go on, there's, there's, the, the state has a list of.
You might actually be thinking of anything.
No, sir, I don't, because I think it's sort of incorporated by reference, and then, and is it the next one, Shane, where it?
Yes.
Where it?
Yes.
Okay. It's incorporated by refer.
Mr. Comer, you have a comment?
Yeah, the, the important thing to remember here is this, this ordinance is, is not a tree protection ordinance. It is not, does not eliminate anyone's ability to cut down any tree on their property in the agriculture zone. It only affects if you want to subdivide some property, and you're gonna, you're gonna present a subdivision map, you need to locate what we define in this, uh, ordinance, in the new ordinance. What is a natural feature and what is a public amen, or what is a, um, a important irreplaceable amenity? The requirement that, or the allowance of the planning commission to, uh, condition approval based on whatever uh, trees or irreplaceable assets exist on a subdivision, um, or a proposed subdivision, that's part of the existing ordinance. Um, or a proposed subdivision, that's part of the existing ordinance. The planning commission has always had that power. But the problem with that power is that. A subdivider would come to us and on the night that they're expecting approval, they suddenly for the first time. Will get some planning commissioner or a group of planning commissioners asking them questions they weren't prepared to answer about. Uh, about natural features or amenities that they didn't know was going to be important. What we're trying to fix in this ordinance is giving both the subdividers some fair warning that. First of all, what is a natural feature? It's not defined in the current ordinance. What is an irreplaceable asset? Not defined in the current ordinance. What we did is we defined it. So you know exactly what you have to put on a plat map. But it doesn't mean that you won't be able to remove it. It just means you gotta put it on a map. We're gonna have a discussion about it. Um, and you know, obviously in Mr. Pilkington's example, if somebody has a, a. A site constraint such as a very large tree right where the house needs to be. Um, it is not the the purpose of this planning commission to, you know, favor a site constraint over site development. That's not what this ordinance allows. It's not what this planning commission is about and it's not the intent of the ordinance. The intent of the ordinance is to give subdividers fair warning of what they really need to to put on their maps. And so that they come in warned that we're gonna have a conversation about it. Under the current regulation, it's very unfavorable to subdividers. And the only reason you haven't come across it is because we, I personally just don't think it's fair. You know, to have you come in that night and suddenly, you know, have this thrust upon you. So. We've been sitting back in abance and not exercising the right that's already in the code. And this will give it a much more fair discussion, but it does not prohibit you from removing any one of those assets. It's not in this ordinance that you can't remove it.
Mr. Smith, you have a question?
I think it's gonna cost the, the, for the surveyor to do a whole, to mark every tree that's ten easy to the boat.
I agree.
I think that's gonna be a great cost. I I don't see that, I don't see that either.
It's because of the people that have been on this commission that aren't opposed to develop.
Third and final call for amendment. Number four of the amend and revise section four dash one, one, one. Is there anybody else to speak for or against? That amendment. If not, I would put this before a motion.
But before we make a motion, I would like to add one thing to remind everyone in the room that. Uh, ad hoc committee was formed on on all of these amendments, including this one, and that ad hoc committee was comprised of three planning commissioners. Three county commissioners, uh, including Cotton Dawson. Um, and uh, two public members, two members from the public, and they went over this ordinance. We went over this over four different meetings. Uh, and came to a consensus that the way this ordinance is written addressed all of these issues. These issues were raised by Commissioner Dawson himself. And Commissioner Dawson ultimately supported this legislation. So your voice was heard in that ad hoc committee because it was raised by Commissioner Dawson. Who ultimately was satisfied that this would not present an undue burden. Uh, and the ad hoc committee unanimously supported what's before this commission tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Comer. With the public hearing being closed, do we have a motion for or against this amendment?
Mr. Chairman, I would move the approval of amendment four as read previously by Mr. Darnell. Uh, as an amendment to the Dixon County subdivision regulations.
I have a motion by Robert Qualls for amendment four. Amend and revise section four dash one, one, one for pres- preservation of natural features and amenities. Section A. Add section four dash one, one, one point one preliminary plant requirements. Do I have a second? Have a second by Jeff Chase. Any further discussion? Uh, myself for the discussion. I'm fifty-two years old. I don't know what natural. Amenities we should have. So with that being said, I can't support this. Any other discussion? If not, we'll go into roll call vote.
Todd Barry.
Yes.
Mike Pilkington. Robert Qualls.
Yes.
Jeff Chase. Shane Chandler.
No.
Christie Sullivan. Robert Comer.
Yes.
Motion fails.
Motion fails. Um, with this being. It would have to be revisited at a later time by a. Failing vote, is that correct?
That is correct. Now, section five is related directly to section, you know, changes.
Yeah, there's no, there's no point proceeding with that five because it's pinned on six.
Right, so is, yeah.
This can be, there, there is. This can be brought up. Are there two ways or just one way it can be brought back up?
It had to be brought back as a public hearing. We'd have to have notes.
I I I realize that.
And with me disagreeing.
Can you bring it back up as as one of the no's? That was my point.
I myself or Ms. Sullivan can bring it back up as a no.
Okay.
Um, my only concern is I do want to preserve what can be preserved. I think this is going to be an additional cost to the developers. And truly. Let's just take kudzu. It's been here for God knows how long.
It's still invasive weed, Mr. Chairman.
It it is, but it was brought here for erosion control. We consider it native, but it is. Definitely not native.
Well, it it was brought here deliberately, but again, not by anyone now living, but it was brought here deliberately. No, it is not native.
We've already voted, so this discussion is is interesting, but I want to point out that. The the ordinance specifically exempts from this um, this ordinance. Anything listed on the Tennessee invasive exotic plant list, which is published, and that is the controlling thing, and kudzu is on that list, so. Kudzu is not regulated by this.
Right.
Ordinance. Anything that's non-native is not regulated by this ordinance.
I just don't think that, uh. My opinion, my opinion only. I think the developer should try to preserve what they can preserve. But as Mr. Pilkington stated, uh, it may not be in the best interest of development.
I fear that if we, if we proceed only under four dash one eleven as it is currently written. So vaguely and so unfavorably, I think I predict the time will come that they will wish that this ordinance had been passed tonight.
Well, with that being said, unless Ms. Sullivan chooses to bring something forth, I think this item is over.
Yeah, with that, I think we've exhausted the.
Okay. Um, so if item number five is null and void, we will move to item number six, amend and revise section. Five dash one oh two point two features.
Section dash five dash one oh two point two. Uh, it it currently reads. Number five, the location of existing public ways, easements, water bodies, streams and other pertinent features such as swamps, railroads. Buildings, parks, cemeteries, drainage facilities and bridges as determined by the planning commission. It shall be revised and amended as follows. The preliminary plat should include the location of existing natural features, which this does relate back to the other items too. Uh, and irreplaceable assets, public ways, easements, and other pertinent features such as swamps, railroads, buildings, parks, cemeteries. Drainage facilities, bridges, and any other existing feature. As may be required by the planning director at the time of submission or by the planning commission at the time of initial consideration. Revision to this section shall become effective immediately upon approval and shall not apply to applications. Properly completed and filed with the appropriate county agencies prior to the effective date of this reservation, uh, revision. So this in part does reply back to the other two.
Mr. Chair, if I may, as the, as the author of these uh, ordinances. I would say that uh, by not approving four dash one elevens change, five dash one oh two depends upon the defined terms, natural features and. Irreplaceable assets in that previous ordinance, which this body did not approve. And therefore, I don't believe that any action can or should be taken. On a revision to five dash one oh two point two because it depends on an ordinance we didn't pass.
I would agree, but I would like to have that ratified.
Do you, do we need still, would you still like to have a public hearing on this specific thing or you just want a motion to?
Let's just, I mean, in my opinion, maybe I'm out of line, but I'd like a motion to see if it needs to be revisited. I don't. See a change in the vote, but uh, Ms. Sullivan, you got her?
No, I'm just, I mean, I'm. If it directly relates to what we've already voted on, I don't see that there's any point to.
So then I would make the motion. That, uh. Due to the fact of. Previous voting, I would consider item number six to amend and revise section five dash one oh two point two features. Not accepted.
Well, I would, under the circumstances you've outlined, Mr. Chairman, I would second that motion.
All right, I have a motion, proper motion by Shane Chandler. A proper second by Robert Qualls and we'll do a roll call vote on that.
Todd Barry.
Just, just a moment. Let's be clear on what we're voting on here. Explain, explain that to me again. Um, yes is no.
We're voting to disapprove.
Right, because this technically falls in line with what's already been turned down, so it's directly related to that. So basically, this is. Even though you did number five is the same way, this number six is also part of that process.
So a yes vote would be. To declined even speaking of an amend and revise section of five oh, five point one, at this point, yes, sir. It can be brought back by an opposing vote, yes. Uh, a yes vote means that yes, we're opposing to take action on item number six. Everybody clear?
What way do I need to vote to be able to suggest at some point in the future we revisit this?
Well, you seconded the motion, so I would say in in comments, you would ask that it be revisited. With a different approach.
Yeah, okay, I think I know how I want to vote, but sure.
Okay, so I do have a proper motion by Shane Chandler and a proper second by Robert Qualls. To decline to accept amendment six. So a yes vote is to decline amendment six. So any further discussions after that? Mr. Qualls.
I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right, so we'll do a roll call.
All right, Todd Barry.
Yes.
Mike Pilkington. Robert Qualls.
Yes.
Jeff Chase. Shane Chandler.
Yes.
Christie Sullivan.
Yeah.
Robert Comer.
Yes.
Okay, so this passes to fail. All right, now we're moving to other business, road dedication for Creekstone subdivision.
All right, Creekstone subdivision off of Nels Creek Road. This goes back to two thousand and one. Uh, included in your pocket was a letter from the highway department stating all work is complete. And up to the county standards, uh, you got a letter of dedication and a copy of the one year uh, maintenance bond requirement. A yes vote here will forward this to the county commission for acceptance.
Okay. You heard Mr. Darnell. Do I have any motion?
I have a comment, Mr. Chandler.
Um, can we get some motions on the floor first? Please.
Well, I'll move to accept the road dedication.
Okay, I have a proper motion by Robert Qualls to accept the road dedication. Do I have a second? Have a second by Christie Sullivan. Any further comments or questions?
I was thinking about the, the last time we had one of those training classes and talking about. Accepting a road bond and who we should accept it from and how it should be a local institution that does business in our area. Where there could be some repercussions if they sort of didn't want to honor that bond. And I was really wondering about how this bond kind of fit into that because it's not an institution that. I'm very familiar with, and if they do much business in this county, I'm familiar with.
I understand that, Mr. Qualls. Um, however, that formula is not decided by us. I believe that is decided. By the county highway department or their planning office.
The bond total is.
So if they meet that requirement.
Regulations that says it has to be a local entity to do it. And we do accept both letter of credits and, you know, and actual insurance bonds. Which your letter of credit is the easiest way to collect. But we have nothing that states one way or the other.
Well, maybe, maybe we should, but I won't accept this rather than not.
Yeah.
I have the same question I always ask on these and I want to get it in the record that staff is satisfied that thirty-five thousand dollars is a proper amount. Or any foreseeable. All right, thank you.
With that being said, I. Agree with your sentiments on that. Uh, I don't see how you could get a driveway done for that, but uh, I do not. Come up with the formulas, so I do have to trust the professionals. So all those, we do have a proper motion and a second, so. With that being said, do all in favor of accepting the road dedication for Creekstone subdivision state aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. All right, we are at the end of our meeting. Any further comments? If not, next stated meeting will be Thursday, November tenth, two thousand twenty-two, seven o'clock, Booty Reed Commission Room.